Twenty twenty-three regular board meeting to order. Mrs. Hutchinson, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Platter?
Here.
Ms. Booten?
Here.
Mr. Hanlon?
Here.
Ms. Kolebitz?
Here.
Mr. Long?
Here.
Mr. Paulson?
Here.
Ms. Crippper?
Here. Mrs. Lackenow, would you lead us in the fudge?
I pledge to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic, and to the states, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have Principal Parr ready to share some information with us about Pleasant Hill.
Hello. Welcome to Pleasant Hill, everyone. It is an honor to have our Board of Education, District Leadership, and Community here with us this evening. My name is Parisquivista Matucos, and I have the privilege of serving as Principal of this school. I've been Principal for the past three years, and over my time, we have shared the message, "We got heart, and you are loved" in our school and our school community. I've seen such growth and connectedness come from this. Mr. Murray has joined me this year as my leadership partner, and he truly embodies the spirit of our school. I'll have Mr. Murray share some more about the impact of the heart that is Pleasant Hill.
Thanks, Park. Hi, I'm Keith Murray. I actually started my career here at Pleasant Hill many years ago, and I feel like I came home because of the heart and connectedness that exists in this school. The heart is seen through the investment in our students and has manifested in the excellent support our fifth-grade Mustang leaders have provided to our school. This started in collaboration with our fifth-grade teachers, Mrs. Behringer, Mrs. Shores, Ms. Mirage, and Ms. Dingman. Our Mustangs have demonstrated heart by their earnest commitment to their leadership responsibilities.
So Keith and I are delightful, and we can tell you all about our school. But instead of us telling you, we'll have some of our Mustang leaders share their thoughts. They are the reason why we're here after all.
All right, so we asked our fifth-grade leaders to share their thoughts on a few prompts. We had three different prompts that we offered up to our fifth-grade students, and we have selected five students to present to you this evening. Parr is right, they will better convey the heart of our school because they are the heart of our school. They are the reason why we're here. So our first prompt that we provided to our fifth-grade staff was, "What does it mean to be a Mustang leader?" We have two of our fifth graders that are presenting today their responses, and our first student to present is Deng.
Everybody thinks we just go to school for education and friends, but there's way more to school than just learning. We make sure that everyone feels included and safe and have more connections with others. Being a Mustang leader is a big role in our school by setting good examples for our little kids and making sure we have the best community in our school. It's showing not only that, but practicing and being a good helper. We work as a team to accomplish outstanding things and make new friends. Every day I come here, and it feels like a new life to me.
Thank you very much, Deng. All right, same prompt, "What does it mean to be a Mustang leader?", and our next presenter is Matthew. Come on up, Matthew.
Being a Mustang leader is to show kids and teachers that we are role model fifth graders and to spread kindness to the school and help us be more responsible and sometimes keeps people safe. And getting honored by the principal and system principal of Pleasant Hill School is awesome. It makes me and probably other people feel like I matter for something, and that just makes me happy. We show kindness and respect by doing these jobs like holding the door, helping the kindergartners on the lunch cart, and making kindergarten line monitor. Can also show kindness and respect by showing new kids in fourth, third, second, first graders and kindergarteners what's expected, so when they are leaders, they know what to show, the fourth, third, second, and first graders and kindergartners.
All right, thank you, Matthew. So our next prompt, our second one, was, "What does it mean to be a Mustang?", and we have two presenters for this. The first is Riley.
It means to be part of this awesome school, Pleasant Hill. Getting to be a Mustang is so exciting. Our principals, teachers, and staff make sure being a Mustang is very special. When I walk into school, I'm not just walking to an ordinary school. It's more like walking into a big extended family. Everyone is so welcoming. I moved here a few weeks before starting kindergarten. I was nervous, but when I came, it was so much fun. Some days, my past teachers give me hugs, and we both get so excited to see each other. Our principals try so hard here to make the students here safe, responsible, respectful, and kind. Let me tell you, they did an amazing job. Here at Pleasant Hill, the teachers, staff, and principals care about us and we care about them.
Thank you, Riley. Very nice job. Okay, same prompt, "What does it mean to be a Mustang?", our next presenter is Mitae.
Being a Mustang to me means not just trying, but it means doing my best, even if the biggest thing pulls me over. It means trusting the process and not giving up. It also means being respectful to others and to appreciate people who are different because everyone matters, no matter how different they are. Being a Mustang also means to be kind and safe. This is what it means to be a Mustang to not only me, but other fifth graders as well.
All right, and then our final prompt, "What does Pleasant Hill mean to me?", and we have one presenter for this one, and it is Ariel.
Pleasant Hill means a lot to me. I've been here since kindergarten, and not only up until now have I realized that I'm really, really lucky to have grown up in this school. Not only do we have good staff, but our school is diverse and we have a good environment. All of the teachers here, all of the teachers here make sure to communicate with their students and make sure that they're okay. The other staff are always nice, too. Teachers and staff members that I barely even know always say hi and ask me how my day is going. It's not a lot, but it makes me feel happier and secure. Pleasant Hill has great students, too. I feel like a lot of people in our school, grown up or not, are really easy to talk to. A lot of the people here are nice and talkative, especially the younger kids. Pleasant Hill gives me and many others an opportunity to grow, not only academically, but socially and emotionally.
Thank you, fifth graders. Very nicely done.
So I think you can see we're more than a school. We're a family, and that family is spelled with a P-H, Pleasant Hill, get it? We love our students, and we work tirelessly to invest in and celebrate them as humans and as learners. But I would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge some people in the room today. I have to say a big thank you to our front office staff, Mr. Falco and Ms. Terpstra and Ms. Borman. You are the backbone of our school and the heartbeat of our school. And we can't do this without our dedicated, creative, and talented, beautiful, loving staff here at Pleasant Hill. Please join me in a round of applause to celebrate the magic that they bring to our school, because they make a difference and they make this come to life. You are so loved. Have a great evening, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Pleasant Hill students, Pleasant Hill staff. I said it when I, the minute I walked into this building tonight, it feels good to be home. As a former Pleasant Hill parent myself, I'm so happy to be here again with you guys, and thank you for all that you do for our district. Okay, are there any modifications for the agenda, to the agenda? Hearing none, President Report, I just have one thing to talk about, and that is, I had the opportunity, and I know some other board members did as well, to attend Bull for the Torch on Saturday. Huge success. What an undertaking to bring that event. It is so wonderful to see students and staff and parents come together as a community to support our Special Olympics students. So that was, that was great. Next up is public comments. In accordance with Board Policy 2.230, members of the public wishing to offer a public comment have the opportunity to do so. A public comment signup sheet was made available until 7:00 PM. Board meetings are available for viewing via our live stream on our YouTube channel. As with all public comments, please be aware it's the Board's regular practice to not directly discuss, ask questions, or take action on public comments until the time has been taken to gather adequate information. The Board is here to listen. Lack of action or direct response following public comments does not imply any lack of interest in what is being shared. Per Board Policy 2.230, the time allotted for each person to speak during public comments may be shortened. We do not need to do that tonight. To preserve confidentiality, the Board and its president request that items relating to either personnel or students be provided to the Board privately or in writing for consideration at a future closed session if necessary. The Board must protect the civility and decorum of the meeting. Please be respectful for duties of the Board, our leadership, our district leadership team, and the democratic process in your public comment. Please include your name and whether you are a resident of the district. Limit your comments to three minutes. Mr. Hanlon will raise his hand as a reminder at the end of your time. Please be factual and courteous, and do not include statements that are personally disrespectful or condescending to members of the Board or staff. The first person is Kristi Hill.
My name is Kristi Hill. I'm a senior member and a major teacher at Pleasant Hill. Thank you for giving me three minutes to discuss my level of district 200. I started working in district 200 a few years ago, and I'm a low country. At that time, I have twelve years of teaching experience, second grade. This was my first year back teaching, my own classroom, full-time, in body years, and this was in there. So a whole new set of skills was required. And this is the year 2020. Masked five-year-olds, six-year-olds, can be difficult to manage and really limit their vulnerabilities. Initially, I suffered a death accident about a week before the start of school, so I had some ailments and some recovery. So all the great ones were there to make it a stressful, difficult year. But it was actually natural. It was a great year. With all the uncertainty around that time, the political divide, the social tensions you might have expected, the sort of nice leadership, work communication, teaching the team, innovation planning, but everyone was at the top for me. Safety was prioritized, new teaching strategies, techniques, materials, and things to maintain. High levels of instruction setting. Kids were so eager. Everyone adapted, everyone was flexible, everyone supported each other. Everyone had the option, and there's teachers that aides, that act, and custodians, the male hands. I was so grateful to be part of this. When I started on myself working at Pleasant Hill and really unsure what to expect, I had worked in three principal districts and private schools. I had worked amongst very talented, dedicated, and intelligent. But I have never been immersed in the culture of working this way. Pleasant Hill encompasses so many things. It's big, it's intense, it's economically, culturally diverse. There are seemingly endless needs to be met, but the needs are renewed as opportunities. The diversity gives us depth and develops our understanding and our empathy. The dedication to happen and the tolerance here is infinite. Everyone, I am totally sure, show emotions in their students and persisting until you can hear a thousand of them, act accordingly socially and emotionally. And the challenges arise, because they do, like new curriculum, amount of struggle, struggles, stupidity, fear, and stagnation. It can take time, but they are all that with thoughtful, informed, and collaborative solutions. I am so proud of the pride of this community. It is the place where I can lay down roots and grow and move professionally and personally. So thank you for listening to me, and thank you to the Board for all that you do to promote positive learning and working environment here. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hill. Next up is Harold Lons. Thank you, Mr. Lons. That concludes our public comment for the evening. Next up is our superintendent report.
Thank you, Mrs. Crabtree, and one, I want to add a huge thank you to our Pleasant Hill students for coming tonight and kicking our meeting off in such an amazing professional way. The way you spoke about your school certainly made me very proud to hear that. Also want to thank our staff that are here tonight. This is by far our biggest staff turnout that we've had at a board meeting after we've come back out on the road, so thank you for that. Thanks for being here. Couple of things that I want to just share with the Board under my report tonight, so we started the meeting with a lot of celebrations, and I want to remind you that next month we'll be at Wheaton North for the board meeting, and we will be honoring students that have moved forward in the National Merit Program. I think we have sixteen students at Wheaton North, seventeen students at Wheaton Warrenville South that receive some level of recognition through the National Merit Program, and as has been the tradition in March, we will bring the National Merit semifinalists to be honored at the meeting, so look forward to that. Want to send a quick, or say a quick thank you to Erica, so she's been working on a couple of different social media campaigns. It started as a staff shout-out campaign, an opportunity for members of our community and members of our staff to recognize other staff members that have gone above and beyond. And then just recently, she's rolled out a Student Spotlight piece, and the response to the Student Spotlight has been absolutely overwhelming, just the staff that have been willing to share stories about amazing things that our students are doing. We often highlight student accomplishments, obviously at a very high level, at board meetings, but that doesn't begin to capture or touch the many incredible accomplishments of our students every day in our twenty schools, but that Student Spotlight does. So if you haven't had a chance to follow that yet, please do. There's some great stories about our kids that are doing amazing things. Couple of thank yous. I was talking to Mrs. Murphy about this on the way over here, as she was bringing me up to speed on a few different pilot opportunities in the district. The Board is well aware that tied to a number of your learning acceleration strategies, we've got staff that are engaged in a bunch of different curricular pilots this year. They're working amazingly hard on behalf of their colleagues, the district, and the Board, and so I just want to say a thank you to our staff that have really stepped up to try and engage in some new experiences for us and provide really meaningful feedback on how that work is going. I know we are also in that season where there's a lot of transition activities starting to happen. I had a parent reach out to me the other day and compliment the Wheaton Warrenville South Transition Freshman Transition, and she just commented on how many students were there, involved, engaged with helping to welcome eighth graders, soon-to-be freshmen to South, and I know we're entering into that season where it's important to remember there's a lot of effort that goes into that, it's a really important transition opportunities across the district, and I'm so thankful for our staff. And then we're nearing the end of our winter sports season, our winter club season, activity seasons, and as I've followed a number of the social media accounts across our high schools, I see that our students are really doing incredible things as they're wrapping up not only those winter sports seasons, but performing arts, a lot of our club opportunities, and so I'm thankful for the staff that have led those efforts, students that really are doing incredible work. And then just three quick reminders of engagement opportunities for the community. One, I've seen messages, I think, from almost all of our schools recently about the Five Essentials window. It is open. Five Essentials is an annual culture climate survey that the state of Illinois does for all schools, and so that is open to parents. It's also open to students that take it, I think, grade four and up, and our staff, and we get feedback only if people participate in the survey. So especially at the parent level, we only get feedback if we can get to a twenty percent participation rate, so I strongly encourage community to take advantage of that. We will be opening up here very shortly the application window for our Citizens Advisory Committee. I know we will have at least seven spots available on that committee, and I want to particularly point out that with some changes in the bylaws last year, we're really looking for representation from each of our school boundary areas. In particular, Madison and Sandberg do not have any, anyone from inside of that area currently represented, and so we're going to work hard to hopefully get some application and interest, and then Lowell, Lincoln, Johnson, and Emerson have one member on CAC, and so we're going to work to really advertise and try to get some applicants there. And then finally, inside of your green folders, one of the things that the Board identified as part of your communication, "Who do I call?", and so if you remember from that conversation early in the year, I think the pandemic altered a lot of our practices. Not only our practices, obviously, inside of the classrooms as we had to adapt, but a lot of our communication structures, and so as we've navigated out of that experience, we really wanted to make sure we put together a resource to help our parents, community members, know and understand the most efficient way to go about getting answers to questions that they have. So rather than just kind of pick the person that they think they ought to reach out to, we want to help with some resources on, here's, if you've got a question about this topic, here's the best person to reach out to in the organization. So Erica and her team have been working on that, and so we've got a draft for you in your green folders that I'd encourage you to take a look at. If you have any feedback, please make sure that you give that to us. We want to get those up and posted on the communications portion of our website, and especially as we transition some of the tools that we're using there. I think that'll hopefully be a nice resource for our families. So that's all I have.
Any questions for Dr. Schuler? Okay, I forgot one thank you to the Pleasant Hill PTA. I'm kind of embarrassed by that, having been Pleasant Hill's president, PTA president for a long time, but thank you for hosting us for this evening. Onto the consent agenda. The following items, approval to post American Government and Civics textbook for community review, approval to post Advanced Placement Calculus A, B, B, C textbook for community review, approval to post Advanced Placement Psychology textbook for community review, approval of Illustrated Math for grades six through eight, approval of activity vehicle lease, approval of Student Information System Cloud hosting by Edgipoint or Synergy, approval of bills payable and payroll, approval of minutes, January eleventh, twenty twenty-three, open and closed, January twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three, Committee of the Hall, open and closed, and approval to destroy recordings of closed sessions prior to September twenty twenty-one as allowable by law, approval of personnel report to include employment, resignation, retirement, and leave of absence of administrative certified, classified, and non-union staff. Are there any items Board members would like removed from the consent agenda? Dr. Schuler, any other information?
I just want to point out the sixth through eighth grade Illustrated Math purchase. You put that on display at your meeting last month. I think we had one community member that shared some comments about kind of his role as a tutor in using that, so we shared that with the Board, but otherwise, no. Recommend action on all these items.
Board members, are there any comments or questions on consent agenda? Okay, none? Hearing none, I ask for a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. So moved. Moved by Mrs. Booten.
Second.
Second by Mr. Paulson. Mrs. Hutchinson, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Booten?
Yes.
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Ms. Platter?
Yes.
Mr. Hanlon?
Yes.
Ms. Kolebitz?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Ms. Crippper?
Yes.
Next up is the policy approval consent agenda. There are thirty-one policy numbers listed for approval. Revised policy two-point-one-zero-zero, revised policy two-point-one-zero-five, revised policy two-point-two-one-zero, revised policy two-point-two-six-five, revised policy four-point-one-zero, revised policy four-point-one-four-zero, revised policy four-point-one-six-five, revised policy five-point-two-zero, revised policy five-point-two-two-zero, revised policy five-point-two-five-oh, revised policy five-point-two-eight-oh, revised policy five-point-three-two-zero, revised policy five-point-three-three-zero, revised policy six-point-one-five, revised policy six-point-two-oh, revised policy six-point-five-zero, revised policy six-point-two-five-oh, revised policy six-point-two-five-five, revised policy six-point-two-six-oh, revised policy six-point-three-one-zero, revised policy six-point-three-four-zero, revised policy six-point-six-zero, revised policy six-point-six-five, revised policy seven-point-one-zero-zero, revised policy seven-point-one-eight-zero, revised policy seven-point-two-five-zero, revised policy seven-point-two-eight-five, revised policy seven-point-two-nine-zero, revised policy seven-point-five-zero, revised policy seven-point-seven-zero, and rewritten policy five-point-one-two-zero. Are there any items Board members want removed from this consent agenda? Hearing none, Dr. Schuler, is there anything else?
No, I just want to make sure that I mention on policy six-point-three-one-zero, that was the policy that had the reference to class rank, and we did pull that out in what you are approving tonight. So the Board agreed to post that with the understanding that that language would be removed before it was brought back for approval. We did not receive any comment on any of these policies after they were posted.
Board members, are there any questions or comments? Okay, hearing none, I ask for a motion and a second to approve the policy approval consent agenda as presented. Moved by Mr. Hanlon?
Second.
Second by Mr. Long. Mrs. Hutchinson, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Hanlon?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Ms. Platter?
Yes.
Ms. Booten?
Yes.
Ms. Kolebitz?
Yes.
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Ms. Crippper?
Yes. Motion passes. Onto- Onto our first act, onto our only action item, Approval of All-Day Kindergarten Fee Reduction. Dr. Schuler?
I'm going to hand this over to Dr. Sloggy to just make a couple of comments, just point of reference. We're bringing this to you now because we really do need to get this fee established early in front of, obviously, when we are doing kindergarten registration. So all of your fees will come to you at a future meeting, but we wanted to take this one apart from regular fees.
Yes, both myself and Dr. O'Keefe have evaluated our 80K cost structure. So that includes our salaries, our benefits, and costs associated with the program, combined with our increasing enrollment. And at this time, we feel that we can reduce that fee going into next year for the 2023, 2024. So we're recommending a reduction of $700 down to $2,900. Remember, those costs incurred in that fee is really at a basis to be a break even program. The secondary piece in that, too, is as we head into next year and we have our firm enrollment set, we'd like to provide the board in early fall with a full evaluation of all-day kindergarten programming. We've just seen an increase in interest, as you can see. Nearly 67% of our kindergarten students that are enrolled are in the all-day kindergarten program this year. And if we see that increasing trend, we certainly want to bring to the Board of Education all the considerations that would come with the potential of universal kindergarten as well. So at this point, we'll take any questions if there are any.
Any questions or comments for Dr. Sloggy?
Sure, I'll go first. First off, I love the fact that we've done this now 10 years. I know this is a big issue in school districts across the area. A lot of school districts are trying to figure out how to provide full-day kindergarten or all-day kindergarten. The fact that we've been doing it 10 years is awesome. I love the fact that we're going through a process to make it more accessible to our families. That's something that we've heard a little bit about over the last year. I guess two kinds of questions. Do we have any anticipated staffing or space issues? And then secondly, do we run into any issues at home schools where there's not enough space available and we have to provide transportation to other schools?
Yeah, we certainly, while space is always tight in our buildings, we have not had issues where we have not been able to open a program because of demand based upon space. So where the demand has been, so interest and enrollment, we've been able to open programs in buildings. The second question was, can you tell me the second question?
Any space available issues where we have to?
Yeah, those space available issues have happened primarily after the school year starts. So we cap our all-day kindergarten programs at 24 students. So if a student was to come in right now in a program where there was 24 students, what we would do is we would offer them one of two things. They could be in our half-day program at the home school, or we would offer a space of all-day kindergarten at a nearby neighboring school that had space within it. So that's how we've addressed that this year and in years prior.
I guess a follow-up question to the first one. We've been able to figure out how to create space or use existing spaces. Has there been a ripple effect of that, that we've had to, you know, get rid of a traditional classroom and adjust some enrollment or take over, let's say, our room or music room as a consequence of that?
Yes, yeah, in some instances, there's always a ripple effect because if you're adding, this year we have quite a few sections of all-day kindergarten. So when you're adding those spaces, traditionally, we haven't seen an impact on taking it away from classroom spaces, but you could have had potentially three or four specialists that were housed in a classroom space. At times, it could be a music or art or pace space, but many times you see our specialists who work really, really hard with our students having to find different spaces or different office areas, or maybe you have several of them sharing a space and kind of segmenting it off to work with students. So yeah, there is a ripple effect at times.
So we're making it work, but it's not an ideal situation in some places.
We're making it work, and I think we do a really, really good job with it. But yeah, but there's always a ripple effect when you prioritize a classroom space, absolutely.
Other questions or comments?
I just want to comment that I really appreciate you doing this, that it's going to make this more accessible to more families. I know we talked about that there were tuition waivers for families that were on the free and reduced lunch, but there's still, you know, a gap above that, that this is a steep cost. And so thank you for doing this work.
Other questions or comments?
One quick question. So are there any instances where families now currently want all-day kindergarten, but there's not space, like there's not enough room in the class? I guess I'm trying to gauge, like, if there was, if there was enough space for anyone who wanted all-day kindergarten, would we be at higher than 67%? Does that make sense? Or do we not deny?
We have never been in a position where we've had to deny a student access to all-day kindergarten district-wide, however.
It just might not be at their home school?
Correct, yep, correct. So it might not be at their home school, but then we would offer it at another school. So there is, there is space at other programs where they're not capped out at 24.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions or comments?
I just have one question that kind of piggybacks a little bit on what Brad was saying in terms of, you know, space. And I know that several of our buildings house other programs that are more of an instructional program. And I know that sometimes when we have to move those, that's a, that's a, is very difficult for students, especially that need that stability. And I just want to be sure that if that is going to be the case, that we're giving those families and students enough time and ability to figure out a way to make that transition be a little bit easier.
Yeah, and certainly, it's something that our special education department, Dr. Kyle, myself, Mrs. Murphy, we all combine our work in that area. I think certainly in the past years, recent years, we've made a concerted effort to even combine programming to make sure there's continuity K5 for some of our instructional level special education programs. The one variable that does always exist is enrollments at the kindergarten level. And so that's why right now, we really work hard to try and project those to the best of our abilities and get all those decisions shored up right now into early spring, especially as we're moving into annual review season for our special education students. So certainly, we are always working to make as little movement as possible within those programs so parents have consistency. But if there's going to be a change, we want to get ahead of it.
Thank you. I do know other further questions. I ask for a motion and a second to reduce the all-day kindergarten fee to $2,900 for the 2023-2024 school year as presented.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Paulson?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Booten. Mrs. Hutchinson, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Ms. Booten?
Yes.
Sorry, Ms. Platter?
Yes.
Mr. Hanlon?
Yes.
Ms. Kolevich?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Ms. Grabber?
Yes.
The motion passes. Onto oral reports. Vision 2026 Perkins &amp; Will Middle School Capital Project Concept Presentation. Dr. Schuler?
Yeah, we're really excited to bring this to the board and the community tonight. So I just want to make a couple of quick comments at the onset here, just to kind of review both the history and where we've been. And then we're going to bring your team from Perkins &amp; Will up to take the board through this. So one, just saying right at the front end, there's no decision being made tonight. There's no decision being made in the next couple of months. So this is the very first time that we've put these concepts out there. And again, I just want to say very, very clearly, right? The point is to begin conversation around solutions to our middle school buildings, and this is the start of a conversation. It is also, though, the continuation of work that actually started in 2016. So for those that were not on the board at the time, we've had a couple of board elections since then. In 2016, the board hired or went out for an RFP, hired Perkins &amp; Will to do a master facility plan. Part of that master facility plan involved doing a very in-depth assessment of all of our facilities, looking both at the capital infrastructure, so what were the needs in terms of physical infrastructure, what were some of the educational opportunities that we outlined in our strategic plan and goals that we wanted to make sure that we could address, and just the physical envelope of our building. And so they brought back to the board at the time a pretty comprehensive master facility plan. Take that into 2017, we advanced to the community a referendum plan with the goal of addressing not all of the needs that were identified in the master facility plan, but those that we prioritized the highest. Obviously, that referendum plan did not pass, so we took a step back, kind of reprioritized those needs, and have since that time been working on the same goals that were a part of that 2016 plan. We've done about $50 million in capital improvement work since that time across our buildings, in addition to constructing the brand-new Early Learning Center. And so you've taken a big chunk, right, out of the master facility plan work that was done, but most of that work has been done at your elementary schools, your high schools, and the Early Childhood Center. We have not done a lot of focused work at the three middle schools that were very much a part of that. And so this year, we set our focus on coming back into those middle school plans. So since the beginning of the year, again, our team from Perkins &amp; Will has been working with teams at each of the three middle schools that we've been focused on, Edison, Monroe, and Franklin revisiting the initial plans that we developed. Obviously, six years have passed since that initial assessment has been done, and so they wanted to revisit and not start over, but make sure the priorities that were established were indeed still priorities, see what's changed in that window of time. And so what we're bringing back to you tonight are some concept solutions aligned to the needs we outlined for you, I think, back in October when we first talked about it this year. So that kind of sets the context for what to expect. I have one more ask for you as Michael comes up. So this is Michael Dalter from Perkins &amp; Will, who's really been leading the effort. If you would be so kind as to let Michael kind of go through all of the concepts for you, I know that you're going to have questions, and I can appreciate that, but I just think it's going to be easier to kind of see everything, and then we'll come back, pick up any questions that you have, and kind of set the stage for what to expect in March and beyond. So without further ado, Michael, it's yours.
There we go. Thank you, Dr. Schuler, for the kind introductions. And good evening, board, and thank you for having us back here today. Again, Michael Dalter, Senior Project Architect with Perkins &amp; Will. I'm here with Mark Jolker as well from Perkins &amp; Will, and Joel Pop Nicholas from Nicholas &amp; Associates, who will run us through some of the budget items that we talked about later on our presentation. So as we go through, we'll just have a brief introduction on our planning process to date, going through some of the information that we presented a few months back, just to highlight the process that we've been going through. Then we'll talk about the proposed improvements, as well as go into a brief discussion of overall project budgets that have been developed, and look for some additional comments and questions at that point. So looking at the planning process, as Dr. Schuler said, we really did start by building upon the work that was done running into the 2016 Facilities Master Plan. We wanted to make sure that the FMP guiding principles were still valid, as well as making sure that we observed any additional components that are needed to be added to that plan or modified from that plan. We did that through a series of observations at each one of the schools, as well as discussions with the building teams on multiple different times to go through what concepts that came out of that that still applied, what concepts that needed to be modified. We used the executive committee as a guideline for the process of planning, as well as a test bed for any of the ideas that came out of those discussions. And from those discussions here, we really formed a series of plans, concepts that you'll see here today. So the focus of a lot of the discussions really came down to several areas of improvement that were common to all three of the schools. And these are similar to ones that were identified back in 2015, 2016 as well. The first one I'll highlight here is the need for consolidated or expanded student wellness or itinerant spaces. That's looking at not only the school nurse's office, but as well any of the itinerant services throughout the schools. Often times, they are using whatever space is available, knowing coming out of the pandemic, the importance of student wellness, both mental and physical, and providing common areas for those services within the building was a high priority at each of the schools. Library learning centers, also a significant priority that had been identified. This is, again, goes previously back to our 2015-2016 plan. But looking at how those spaces can start working hard, they're already very hard-working spaces, and how can they work even harder to support education as it has continued to shift in the building? And what new role do those have in, within the education at each one of the middle schools? Looking at the overall classroom environment, I know we talked significantly about furniture, as well as technology and other improvements that can be made to the education environment at the previous master plan, and those still continue to be areas of improvement that can be done, you know, really without extensive need for renovation within a building. These are, these are improvements within the existing framework that you have right now that can have significant improvement. If you look at the, just the furniture in the classroom in the picture here, it does limit the flexibility, as well as the interactive capabilities of the classroom. So a simple shift around a furniture can have a significant impact on the existing environment. Science spaces, through discussions, we established a baseline area square footage for science lab spaces within the, within middle schools, using, using a common framework that we wanted to apply to each one of the schools that would be a minimum approach for those, and noting, knowing that there's some significant size differences within the existing middle schools. Also, taking a look at how these spaces can be more flexible for use here, both for instruction as well as for laboratory purposes. And that's a common practice that we see throughout science facilities, is really trying to make them easily reconfigurable and make them work really, really hard for the students who are using those. Small group and collaboration spaces, these ties pretty closely to that itinerant portion, where we look at areas that can be used as intentional spaces for breakout within the, within the buildings. This tends to be a little harder in existing buildings to be able to put that in. So we looked for any opportunity we could to use either existing spaces that mirror those same approaches or create other intentional spaces. And these can be anything from the areas that students are currently using for breakout testing that is in the hallway, or other, other purposes for small group meeting spaces, or for project-based learning approaches within the, within the floor plan. So again, looking for intentional areas that that can be done throughout the plan. Performing and visual arts spaces, again, these are some of the, the spaces that we like to say are ones that really are what bring students into the door sometimes, that are, that are highly interested, spaces for students to create a connection with the place and with the, with, with the school itself. We saw some areas that need improvement in all the facilities, and we wanted to address those as we developed and improved the plans. So just the general building look and feel, some areas are, have been noted by faculty and staff to be considered to be dated. So there's the ability to introduce some additional vitality through improving those common areas, just so that the, there's a consistent language throughout the building as much as possible. As well as building systems, taking a look at which of the systems that fall into the capital improvement section that need, need renovation, need modification, and how those can impact the overall, the overall plan. So I'll touch on the build, the proposed improvement. So we took a three-tiered approach to this, a little bit different than, than previous plan here, but we wanted to really take a look at this from a way of understanding that there is a, that we can work within the existing framework of the building as much as possible. And then if we're, if we need to, because of educational needs, to expand outside of that framework, we can. We start with looking at the low concept, which addresses basic infrastructure needs. Building onto that, we have a mid-concept that's developed for each one of the schools that adds additional educational improvements. Again, we're trying to use the existing building framework as much as possible to address this, knowing that there are some challenges with the existing building footprint. There's, there's, you'll see an outlier in the presentation here that wasn't able to work within that framework for this. framework for this section. But then we looked at, okay, what if we were able to move outside of the building footprint? Not in a radical manner, but a conservative approach that meets the educational needs of the facility, but understands that if we can expand, what the possibilities might be to that. And you'll see the mid and the high approach at each one of these schools that addresses it their way. So we're not saying that the low tier, the mid-tier, the high tier, that's the, that's the plan that it's going to be. We're guessing we're somewhere in between each, any one of those when everything's pulled together at the end of the day. So don't view those as the endpoint. View those as working points where we'll get to a compromise between one or the other. So looking at the overall concepts, the low concept, again, to steal one of Mark's phrases, there is no do-nothing option. There is significant capital needs at each one of the schools that needs to be addressed. So there is investment that would need to be made through, for deferred maintenance, for health, life, safety items, for maintenance, physical plant needs, other maintenance, improvements, finishes, et cetera. So this low concept really takes a look at that. And you won't see a number to that today. We're still finalizing out and working through those items to make sure that we have a good picture of what that looks like, but we'll still, we'll get that back to you shortly. So this, again, does not have any reconfiguration or upgrade to the educational environments, but has a, has a cost to it. So we can, we can build on that to go to the mid-concept here. We'll start at Monroe. Monroe, a single-story building here, looking at the mid-concept in this diagram. The one main starting point for at Monroe is the, is recognition of some challenges with performing arts. That is with the, with not just the auditorium, but also the additional performing arts spaces within the building that are undersized for recommendation. So as similar to the 2016 Master Plan concept here, this has a building addition on the northwest corner of the, of campus that includes a performing arts facility, as well as the associated performing arts classrooms and other components within this. As you see, you may not be able to see all the text on your printout here, but the idea here is to tie each one of these areas to a, to a component from Porter of a graduate, so that there is an understanding that there is a direct connection between there. So there is, this, this approach uses the Franklin model for a, a performing arts center, just as a concept. So you understand the sizing there. That's a more of a, a smaller, a more intimate setting that is as good for smaller gatherings, lecture-style approach as well. So because that, of the position of this, and because of some additional needs to update student locker rooms, the, this has a consolidated locker facility that gets created as a building addition off to the east of the gymnasiums. That allows also opening up corridors on either side to provide access to the other two gymnasiums on campus, which is typically done through the gymnasium. So allowing that direct egress pathway through there improves traffic flow and improves access to your existing facilities. If you look back at the existing performing arts spaces here, that allows those high bay, higher ceiling spaces to be used for Project Lead the Way spaces, or other elective spaces that get moved into there. That allows to consolidate the essentials programs, the self-contained special education areas, into a suite immediately adjacent to that, that has a life skills lab, an occupational therapy, physical therapy space, and toileting in that area, something that was a significant need identified by the users there. That pushes the visual arts space further south here into a consolidated space that is surrounded currently by some student itinerant spaces that can be also expanded into an area next to the main, main office space here. We look for some miscellaneous improvements in the main commons area, that is to improve sightlines, as well, as well as updating the commons area, taking the storage space that is currently the stage and using that for other purposes. In this case, it's for teacher workroom and gathering space. Then we, looking over at the east side here, we have a high focus on science lab space. So the science lab classrooms that are currently service seventh and sixth grade, just, I'm sorry, the seventh and eighth grade immediately off of the library learning center here, we'd look to refurbish those spaces in place in this concept to make sure that they meet their more flexible use of space. They're still a bit undersized compared to the district standard that was established, but we can see how furniture and other uses of those spaces can make those into more flexible learning environments. We'd look to improve the library learning center itself, making, adding a maker space, office-ing, upgrading furniture and collaboration areas. In the sixth-grade science area, these are two small science lab classrooms that would be expanded, and then an additional classroom that currently sits here as well. So as we continue to move up from the, from the mid-concept to the high concept, you see that the performing arts addition increases in size in order to provide a larger performing venue that is, that is using the Hubble model. So this is a footprint that's identical to the Hubble model here, using that as the basis for that to provide two larger performing arts facilities at the middle school level within the district. There are the same classroom facilities adjacent to that. And the same thing occurs here, where Project Lead the Way or other elective spaces take the current performing arts area, and a large, and an enlarged student wellness facility gets added adjacent to that also, and a teacher's workspace immediately adjacent to that. So the essentials classroom still exists as a suite here, but there's, there is, either model can be correct of, if it's a distributed essentials model, or if it's a centralized essentials suite. Certainly, both models are supported on either concept, on how that could work. This shows how a couple classrooms that are currently over in the central classroom area are, are put back there in this option here. So the seventh and eighth grade science classrooms in this concept have been, have been relocated to an area that was, had some inboard classrooms expanded in their footprint and allowed to have some additional small group spaces. They are replaced by classrooms that have additional small group spaces that can either service those classrooms, or be an amenity for the library learning center and the other classrooms surrounding it as well. So that does not require an addition that is building, again, within the footprint of the camp, of the campus itself. The expansion to the sixth-grade science labs would require a small building addition in order to meet that square footage and have the adjacent classrooms meeting the overall count. Now, the goal here on most of the concepts has been to maintain a steady state of number of classrooms throughout the campus, and that was, that was a directive from how the instructors and how the building teams were looking at their buildings as well. So each one of the concepts, you'll see a diagram here that looks, that tries to identify the levels of improvement at each one of the stages. Now, that's, these are the, the main category improvements here, and then you can see the levels of improvement that are made as increasing as each of the concepts moves up from low all the way to high. So we'll move up to the mid-level at Edison. Again, the, the same approach at Edison was taken, looking at those same concepts that have come out of each one of the discussions here around right-sizing science, centralizing student itinerant spaces, and updating the main entry and administration here. So immediately adjacent to the main entryway, a consolidated student itinerant office, as well as an enlarged nurse's office that provides a central location for student services, as well as the nursing, and a central conference room for the building. That conference room is currently used in the, in a current fax lab that's adjacent to this, that would be converted into a science lab. Other science labs are right-sized off onto the west, on the northwest of the plan, and existing science labs are renovated to match the new science labs that are created here. So we'll also see how we can add some additional itinerant or breakout spaces into what is an underutilized common space over here. We want to update toilet rooms for accessibility and for finishes throughout the building. Look at increasing the size of the performing arts office and the performing arts ensemble room. Again, this is all within the existing building footprint. There's also a few miscellaneous updating projects that are identified throughout as well. We look at increasing, improving acoustics at the auxiliary gymnasium, replacing gym flooring, and updating the locker rooms in the lower level also. Moving upstairs, the main focus is the refresh of the library learning center. In order to increase connectivity for security and movement purposes, open up the hallway in front of that library learning center, which is currently incorporated into the LLC. That provides an opportunity to have a straight-run hallway up there and have some spaces off of that that can serve for small group use, also have a decent connection back to the LLC here. We've, we're talking about the spaces in between classrooms that currently exist. There are underutilized components in here that can be used for breakout spaces for itinerant use, as well as for small group use, both from the hallway side and in the, from the classroom side. These three areas right now are currently, again, underutilized and sort of owned by the adjacent classrooms, but to be able to open those up into the hallway access provides a much greater opportunity for the surrounding classrooms to make use of those spaces. Moving up to the high plan, the focus here has been looking at the movement and upsizing of the library learning center to be comparable with other library learning centers in the middle, middle schools throughout the district. So the concept here is to take what is an underutilized interior courtyard space here and infill that with a, with a new LLC. That LLC connects on two levels here, so that is, has a really good connection to all the classrooms on the first floor and the second floor, provides a good opportunity to have a connection to a common space adjacent to it, as well as to the cafeteria to its southwest. Here, also the same concepts of introducing a centralized itinerant space for, as well as nurses, nursing space in the student wellness suite here, reconfiguration of the main entryway and offices, looking at the upsizing and right-sizing those science lab spaces, as well as the other miscellaneous improvement projects. We also talk about a small building addition here in order to introduce practice rooms for, for the performing arts spaces, and to bring lockers out of the main band and choral spaces in order to give those spaces some additional breathing room in there. At the main entryway, there's a two-story connecting stair that is introduced here. This is new to this plan, right off the main entryway. That provides some relief for the main stair, which is right here on the southwest corner by the auditorium. So that gives two main communicating pathways up to the second floor that, that would relieve the congestion on that one main stair right now. So as you go upstairs, the, what is currently the LLC gets renovated into additional classroom spaces and a, and a upper common space. That upper common serves not only the classrooms surrounding it, but any classroom on this level, with enclosed and open collaboration areas, workroom space, and provides a breathing room for this level that it currently doesn't have. The LLC that, that is in the infill space extends to the second floor and provides that connection via a large stair down to the first floor in this area. The same approach is taken, again, with the common, with the common small group and office spaces in between classrooms throughout on this level. Same approach, again, with the, this will seem familiar on the low, medium, high rating scale, so that's very similar to what was previously shown as well over at Monroe. Looking at Franklin, Franklin, three-story class facility, as you, if you recall, the 2016 Master Plan had a radical reimagining of the interior of Franklin. We've taken a step back from that to try to understand how we can work within the framework of the building. Again, if there's an ability to, what, what wouldn't expansion to that building allow us to do? The mid-concept looks at how we can work within the existing framework, what opportunities are available within that framework, and to maintain the existing classroom count, but see how we can utilize space in a different manner. This, again, stems a lot from how science is treated within the space, how building circulation is treated, and how the, the special arts, performing arts spaces is treated throughout. So one of the main challenges at Franklin is the, is how, the nature of circulation through the building. What is kind of a cobbled corridor on both the upper level and the first floor here is attempted to be straightened out and establish an eighth-grade commons, which serves as a pre- and post-function space for the main gymnasium here, as well as provides opportunities for the, the classrooms in this area to break out into the, into the space. We want to improve acoustics between the music spaces. Currently, these two performing arts spaces are unable to be occupied at the same time because of they're adjacent to each other. There are still going to be challenges. I don't know that we can do a, enough of a job that can make those be able to operate at the same time, but improvements in acoustics can certainly be made. We look at right-sizing or close-to-right-sizing as much as possible science labs, consolidating student services and expanding the nurse's office immediately adjacent to the main entryway here. Moving upstairs, we've relocated science to co-locate them as much as possible up on the north side of campus, again, extending the corridor, which jogs because of some structural columns in this area, to be able to have a straight line of sight through this area. It provides some opportunity for open space on the second floor here, but we, but the main idea, again, is to extend that as a straight line for observation purposes and for navigation as well. We've looked, there are some, some areas within the framework of the plan now that are in between classrooms that are, have, provide opportunities for both open and enclosed small group space throughout there, as well as refreshing the library learning center in place. Now, some of the challenges here, again, especially when we get downstairs, are the classrooms, as they are, remain at the size as they are. We would look to renovate the kitchen cafeteria and servary space, added an additional classroom down here to balance out our overall numbers. The high concept takes two major pieces and repositions them within the building. The starting point is to place an addition here that consolidates and expands the performing arts facility. So this is band orchestra choral, provides the correct acoustic separation between those spaces, and also upsizes them for the, the needs of those facilities. By doing that, we're able to backfill what is a two-story space that is currently the band and orchestra space and some ancillary areas with a library learning center, that connects on two levels here, similar to the, to the approach that's taken at Edison. By using that, that core space there, that provides a central place for the library learning center that, that services both the first and the second floor. On that second floor, you see a new mezzanine here built that connects down via stair to the, in the open space for the LLC, that provides good opportunity for that connection at all these classrooms here. This also allows some additional classroom space on the second floor that can, that allows more breathing room for the classrooms in general on the first and second floor. So we were able to right-size classrooms that are currently undersized as much as possible, backfill the current LLC with some additional classrooms and some collaboration areas. This concept here, which is interchangeable with the previous one, has science stacked over in the southeast corner on the second floor instead of co-located, but that certainly is something that can be done. This provides an opportunity to have some additional PE storage that's immediately adjacent to adjacent to the upper gym in this area. Lower level, much the same as it currently sits. There is a, again, renovating the kitchen cafeteria and servery in place and providing new single-user toilets on all three levels. We've, we've looked at a few different approaches to that. We have, this is kind of a placeholder on where that could happen. We did look at a number of different options on, especially at Franklin, of, of the configuration of what that, what different pieces going different places are. And in each one of the schools, we presented the different, different options, and this is where we landed as, as working with those building teams. So the same, same option evaluation here, very similar to the previous ones, as the options increase, the improvements increase to each one of those major categories. So budget development, we started, we took each one of these concept diagrams and really broke it down into what is the, the level of work that's being done in the areas of improvement? That is anything from demolition, either a whole or partial, new construction, light renovation, which we consider to be using within the existing footprint of the space, updating the building finishes or other components within that space. Medium renovation involves some reconfiguration of spaces, so changing out walls, moving spaces around. And heavy renovation is, is either extensive renovation, which would be total gut and rehaul, or, or extensive renovation with plumbing work. And those, those really provide a framework to have a broad brush viewpoint of the overall conceptual budget as it stands right now. As we, we'll take a look at the numbers in just a second here, but we wanted to frame this in the idea that, as was similar to the 2016 master plan, we look at the entirety of the master plan, understanding the budget for that, and that allows you to start selecting priority and enabling projects that could fit into a first-phase project. And that's either based on importance, budget, or otherwise. So we're, we're looking at the whole picture right now and to be able to bring that, to break that down into further components. So as you see here, we talked about establishing a range of budget for each one of these, since we are at such a preliminary concept, and the numbers that you put, that you have here are within that range for that mid and that high concept. And I'll, I'll bring Joe up to, to talk about that.
Hello, everyone. Just a few comments on, on the budget. So kind of what goes into this budget assessment? How do we come up with these ranges for each school? It's important to know these ranges are based on current market conditions, where we're at today, plus 4% for the next two years. Okay, so it's a conservative approach. I think it's good practice to be conservative. We don't know what the market's going to be like two, three years from now. Could come down. But where we're at today, all indication is that there's still going to be a tremendous amount of work in the construction industry two, three years from now. So we have adequate placeholders to accommodate that. Besides that, we do have a contingency. It is based on implementing the work over a three-to-four-year span. Those are some of the major factors that kind of go into creating the range. But again, it's a high-level look at it. It's help with, it's to help with decision-making moving forward. It's an all-in approach, similar to Jefferson, for those of you that were involved with that. Once the design commenced, we were sort of the check and balance from budget standpoint, leading to the out-to-bid date. We always want to make sure that once that baseline budget is established, that we maintain that throughout the design phase. So this would, this would be a similar process in this case as well, if and when the design does commence. Any questions with regards to the budget range, design?
I think we, we can move in. We've got just two, two more slides, like process moving forward, but I think this would be a good point for us to kind of stop and take some preliminary questions. And again, I just want to remind you that your opportunity to ask questions, ask for additional information, doesn't stop tonight. I know you're going to need some time to really digest both what you have here on paper. We'll make sure we send you the electronic versions of these, if it's easier to sort of look at them and where you can, you can blow them up a little bit as well, so it doesn't end, but, but we'll go ahead and start.
So, you think you said one of the assumptions was like a four-year schedule? Would I, if, just for kind of doing one of these, would I spread the costs evenly across the four years? Or would I, would there be some type of spike? Because that, if I'm adding 4% for inflation, that could affect that assumption a little bit. I'm just kind of curious what you'd see that spend being over the four years?
Yeah, I think we're closer to three years. Three to four is another range. So over the course of three years, and the reason it's three years, it's to take advantage of three different summers. So there's substantial amount of interior renovation that would have to be phased and coordinated, obviously. But I'm confident two years at 4% gets, gets that three-year cost of construction covered.
And would I spread that cost evenly, just for estimate purposes across?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Other questions or comments?
I just had a question. I just want to clarify if I heard something, something right. With Monroe, if in the mid one, I believe you said the science labs that are, would be smaller than the district standard, but could make it work, but in, and then in the, in the high, they were the correct size? I guess I just wanted a little bit more definition around what is the district standard?
Sure.
And, you know what I mean? Like, how much, like, how much are we off there?
Right.
And it just, that just, if, yeah.
Through the discussions that we had through, in the process, we really took a look at, at the Hubble Science Labs and wanted to say, okay, if we're going to establish a baseline, is that kind of the approach? And we, we took a look back through the, each one of the, the middle schools to understand what that meant. And that means about a 1,200 square foot model is the, is the baseline for that. So you'll see that some of them, some of the classrooms at Monroe and at Edison are slightly under that. We think that there's opportunities to, you know, look at the efficiency of the layout of those spaces in order to make them, you know, to operate in a, in a more efficient standpoint. The challenge here at Monroe is, with the existing configuration, the, the square footages that you see are kind of a misnomer because of that small hallway that comes into each one of these classrooms. I don't want to get too far into details, but it just requires us to look at more efficient planning within those spaces as much as possible. And, and we established that moving, moving to the next concept, at the high concept, we're able to increase the size of those science lab classrooms to meet or exceed that standard threshold that we established.
Okay. And then, is for Edison and Franklin, is it kind of the same idea there?
Yeah, same, same idea, yes.
Yeah, okay. That was the, I mean, I don't want to get too deep into every, into things here, too, but I, that was just sort of the one big thing that stuck out to me, that I just wanted to get some context around that.
Yeah, it's a challenge working within the existing framework as well of the building. You know, we, again, we're, we challenged ourselves and the building teams to see how much we could do within that existing framework and, at that, those mid tiers as much as possible, too.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Paulson, if we're just going in order, do you want to go next, or no?
Do you want me to?
Well, we're just going around the table.
Sure, I'll go. First off, great job.
Thank you.
Sorry, better go like this, right? I love the mid-level, high-level separation. I think one of the things that kind of screams out to me is the, the need to reshuffle spaces, the ripple effect of if you solve this problem and kind of reposition different spaces around, that's where the big benefit comes from, from a planning process, rather than doing it, excuse me, piecemeal over a period of time.
Right.
I like, one of the questions I had on Franklin in the mid-level scheme, if you can go to, go to the second floor. So in the mid-level scheme, you have the library on two and the cafeteria on zero. Was there any consideration of flipping it down to one to connect it into the cafeteria in any way, which I know a lot of schools, schools are doing?
Sure. We have, we, we didn't consider that, the option of moving that immediately below it to the first floor here. I think the, the challenge there is that the, is based on the structure of the building as well as the, you know, the size that, that might be affected by doing that, but it is certainly something that, that can be an option that we could explore.
And then the other thought, which kind of goes back to some of my comments in the first time you guys were here, just connecting this to Portrait of Graduate.
Right.
I think is very important, and I appreciate the reference to that, that, you know, this impacts every kid in our district. And I think that transition from, transition in the middle school, this is almost kind of like a little table-setting experience for the kids. And so trying to think broadly about the improvements is, is super important, so.
Yeah.
I think it's well done. I know it's very early concept. I know that there's about a 30 million estimated delta between the mid-level and high-level on the top end of those ranges, which seems reasonable. And I think the, all the assumptions you put in, in the, in the budgets are appropriate, given where we are.
Great.
One quick question.
Yeah.
Just, I was, I want to go back to budget for a sec. What would it cost to build a new school?
Get that on my list.
I mean, if I add up the price tags, they're, it's getting, you know, significant. So I'm, I'm curious what a new school would cost. I just quickly Googled, 325 bucks a square foot. I have no idea if that's accurate or not, but.
Double it.
Double it, yeah.
Who's designing it? No, this guy, this guy.
Wow.
At least double that. The big, a big variant in that is site.
Yeah.
And the amount of site work associated with the new school, but at le, at least double that.
I have no idea how big.
Six to $700 a square foot, all in, everything.
Middle, our middle schools, what's a rough estimate? We've got to be close to 100,000, yeah?
120,000 square feet or so.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Blatner, do you have any questions?
And, and just to piggyback on that, we did, we did investigate what, what that might look like very early in the process to understand it. And, you know, your land, land poor in a couple of these facilities, it doesn't allow that opportunity unless there's some significant negotiations that would happen to allow you to operate a school and build one at the same time. So it is, it, it's not that we didn't look at it, it's just that there are some feasibility issues with that as well.
The only one, the only one where that would make sense is Franklin, right?
How old is Franklin?
I'd have to get it for you.
Mrs. Blatner, do you have questions?
Yes, thank you. I'm going to the last slide that you had up with the budget, just two quick questions. At the bottom, it says the budget does not include, list three things. Do you, are you able to come up, come up with an estimate for what those, what those costs would look like? Not necessarily right now, but.
Buildership policy, once, once we get further along in the design and budget standpoint, and we establish sort of a final control estimate, that's something we can, we can determine with, with the insurance company. Typically, that's a district obtained policy. So yes to that. FFNE furniture, once again, if there is a need for new furniture in some of the new spaces, that's something that we can budget as well. There's just, it's a lot of TBD at this point.
I think number three is the one that probably spe, or, you know, stands out to me the most, happens materials abatement, because that could be pretty costly.
There, I'm sure there is an asbestos assessment done or, that will be done in areas of work. So once that's created, that'll factor into our budget as well. But at this point, that's something that's TBD as well.
Okay, thank you. And then, do you have the cost for each school for what the low category would look like?
Not yet, but that's, that's on the action list. So that'll be, that'll be something that we're going to be focusing on in the near future, to establish what that, that low scheme would look like.
Okay, thank you. That's, thank you.
I just wanted to add, I have, I pulled out my folder from 2016, 17, and I, that's the documents I'm looking at. So Edison was built in 1960, Franklin was born, born, was built in 1953, and Monroe was built in 1969. Last major renovation to Edison was 1999, Franklin 1997, and Monroe 2001.
Thank you. Mr. Long, do you have any questions?
Yeah, man, maybe you have it there. For the middle schools, any idea of the rough amount that it was in the 2017 referendum?
Yes. Dr. O'Keefe, you, you had a point of comparison there, or actually, maybe Mr. Doulter did.
Please, if I'm wrong, correct me, but I think we were in the $80 million range, correct?
And, and would that have been mid or high, you know, in terms of the, what we were seeing here? Like what, is that comparable to the, the high?
It was probably some combination of, of, of mid and high. So the, certainly Monroe, these plans are pretty reflective, I think, of the Monroe plan. I think probably Franklin is actually pulled in a bit over what I think the plan was as part of that, that referendum. Edison's pretty similar.
Okay, and then the other question I have is, when we're doing this, will we put our Sherman Durges dollars towards this, or will we still have other maintenance going on at the same time?
I think that, that would have to be a, a board decision, how you want it to prioritize. So certainly, so I guess two levels of analysis to that. One, I would want to make sure that, that your facilities team was fully confident in any other major projects that might sit in front of us in the next three to five years. So I think probably the, the, the major analysis there is we've done a lot of work to upgrade some of the HVAC systems across buildings. That's the one I just would want to make sure there's not a major project sitting there, but I think you as a board could, could make that decision, if you wanted to allocate that to, to part of the budget, you know, again, over a three-year period, that'd be about $22 million.
And then, when's the appropriate time for the, the funding conversation? Like how we would look at that?
We can do that immediately. So I guess, again, I think that could be a request that, that we bring into the conversation right away in your next meeting, if, if you, you want to. And I think what, if I take you back to that conversation, what we would do is update what we did last time, which is to identify for you the sources of, of revenue that you can draw from. You already mentioned one of them tonight, in Sherman Durges, your existing budget and fund balance. There are some non-referendum borrowing options that you would have available to you, such as you did for Jefferson and the lease certificate structure. There's a version of that that could probably be looked at, certainly, you know, some, some non-referendum bonding authority you have, and then obviously there's a range of, of referendum borrowing options. We, we would identify those buckets for you so that you can, you can kind of put them together in whatever way you want to. I will tell you this, without diving deeply into it, you have many more tools available to you now than you had six years ago, right? Based on the work that's been done, based on debt you have paid off in the last six years, and where that sits, and based on the fact that at that time, even as we were talking about existing revenue, the board was allocating about $1 million a year out of your budget. So we were just starting to talk about this concept of Sherman Durges and hope we could get to it, and you are, you are now there. So the fact that you are allocating that amount of money out of your operating budget every year gives you some flexibility in both of those tools. So, but we can do that.
Okay. And then my last question, what, when do you, when would we anticipate starting to do this?
The question was, when, when might we start? So let's, let's just assume for a second that we could get to a refined set of concepts and plans by end of, of this school year. What, what would you think potentially is phasing timeline?
We look at, we can, spring of '25, where we can commence with, with the additions, and then obviously take advantage of each summer.
Sure.
So, yeah, spring of '25.
Okay, thank you.
My second question was on community input. Is there going to be an opportunity for community input other than the citizens or the community for community input, other than the citizens, or the community advisory committee? Or the, I'm sorry, I was thinking the different CAC. So that, that's not CAC, will that be a different committee?
Yeah, so, good, you just, just went forward into, to slides. So, yes, I, I think there can, and I think there would need to be. I'd want to get some input from the board on exactly how you wanted to, to approach that. So I think one concept or thought that we had is utilizing CAC to launch the conversation, but then draw from CAC and some other parent representatives, a broader community that would focus only on this work over the next three to five months. So, so we've used a model in the past, we've done significant engagement of kind of a steering committee to drive in some of the broader engagement, whether that be some, some survey feedback, or thought exchange feedback, maybe a series of like parent open house, you know, Q and A type pieces. But I'd like to introduce this conversation with CAC a week from tonight, to begin to bring them into the conversation, and again, start to solicit some input, question, and engagement at the same time that the board is moving forward. I think that'll allow us to kind of move your discussions forward at the same time that we're bringing the broader community into it.
I had two quick questions on the plans. On Franklin with the addition, does that eat into their parking at all?
Yes, it does. The, there, there's a small parking lot that's right in this corner here, that would get displaced by that. So yes.
And then for all those schools, there was a line item for building system improvements. Can you elaborate on those, please?
Yeah, I mean, the, the, the building system improvements kind of tie into a lot of the components that we're looking at as much as possible. We want to look at the, the, the electrical systems, the lighting systems within the building, understand that there's, there may be some additional, you know, mechanical reconfiguration within those spaces as they're, as they're adjusted throughout there. As we continue to develop those, that low concept, we're going to take a look at and see what are the, what are the capital needs that, that associate with systems in there, and how those can tie into that also. So we're looking at a really, a component-based approach to this, and knowing how the, the modifications are going to be necessary for each one of those components.
I have, just to have a few questions. With Monroe, if for the addition, would we have to then look at, don't we have facilities back there? We'd have to look at something that would have to then displaced, they'd be displaced and have to go somewhere. With Edison, with enrollment, with the new housing that's going to be coming in, are we confident that these plans will be able to? Two level LLCs. I'm just curious, does, with student supervision challenges with that, like is that, would we be having to look at more staffing to be able to be there? You know, just some other things to be thinking. Student supervision was the first thing that came to my mind when I thought of two levels. My question about how old is Franklin, because I wondered in terms of, of that, if that, putting the money into that. And then my last question is, do we have in the gathering of, of feedback, student feedback? Like, what do they feel? I, I'm in a lot of middle schools, and they all look so, so different. But, you know, are we missing something that students really feel like this would be a helpful to have? Just getting some feedback from them as well. Those are just my top-of-mind thoughts. Anything else?
Yeah, can I, I want to kind of reframe some thoughts here. I kind of asked my, asked myself, going way back to the beginning, why are we doing this? What's, what's the purpose? Why do we embark on this? And I think there's really three reasons. As I look at it as a board member, one, it's about the kids, right? So kids learn in schools, and so making improvements, and teachers work in schools, making improvements to the spaces and the buildings and modernizing them is an important, critical element of complementing and expanding the learning experience of kids. Number two, I think it's, it's our responsibility as a board to protect the taxpayer investment that this community's made since the mid-'50s and '60s. Our, our community members that live here now are reaping the benefits of that, that investment that the community made over time. And I think it's, it's incumbent upon us to create a plan for the current students and future students and future residents that are going to experience these schools. And then third, why do it, why do a master plan? Because I think you need to have a vision of how you can implement the work over a shorter period of time. It's always going to be more cost-effective if we can create a plan that does it in a series of two, three, four-year window, rather than stretching it out piecemeal at different points, you know, over a 10-year period. It's much more cost-effective to do it that way. So kids, learning experience, respect the taxpayer investment, and try to be as cost-effective as possible. To me, that's why we're doing a middle school plan, to cast that vision.
Thank you. Anything else before we move on? Okay.
So can I just summarize by asking you to, to please write down, as you're going through this, all of the questions, any additional information you need, questions you have about this. I, I think the, the more that you can get some of those questions to me, even in front of the March meeting, it'd be helpful to make sure that we are prepared with any information we might need to continue to, to guide the conversation. Two, I was going to suggest that the board's Community Engagement Committee come together to really look at that kind of thoughtful plan around engagement and feedback from the, the community. Again, I can put a plan together, but I really want your input into how you'd like to see that, any other voices you want to bring into the conversation, such as was, was mentioned tonight. And then, this will be back, I would anticipate, this will be on the, the next few meetings, as we continue to gather your feedback and, and sort of direct us forward. And then I heard tonight, and I'm, and I'm assuming just based on, on the two requests, and others would agree, that you would like to bring some of the funding concepts into the discussion sooner rather than later, just to understand tools that are available to you and, and impact. And again, I think, you know, how you, how you view it, right? Obviously, I want you to have all the tools available to you to get to a decision. So if having, obviously, those funding concepts sooner rather than later, we'd want to, we want to get those together for you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is our Vision 2026 Master Technology Plan Update. See Mr. Spencer's walking up there?
Good evening, board. What you have before you today is my annual State of Technology presentation. And this is going to focus primarily on the boxes and wires part of our department. So just as a reminder, what we have in, as part of our Vision 2026 is three annual goals that we try to strive for each year. The first is to annually assess the stability and security of district technology systems, followed by ensuring comprehensive data systems are accessible and usable for staff, and then to regularly evaluate digital tools and subscriptions to ensure they are meeting the needs of the school system and are aligned with our strategic work. So, starting with the first one, how to annually assess the stability and security of the district technology systems that we have. If the board recalls, last year, the board approved a $1.7 million allocation to get our infrastructure, our technology system, to a point where we could then be on a predictable schedule. We, we seem to always be chasing things as they fell out of life, as things needed to be replaced. And we wanted to get on a predictable cycle. So we have the fortunate ability to tap into our annual E-rate funds. We had the ability to tap into some of the ESER funds. So out of that $1.7 million, only about $64,000 came from a regular operating budget. But as a result of that allocation, we do now have a predictable schedule that all of our infrastructure is on. The biggest part of that infrastructure modernization is that we all have brand-new switches and access points. So what that means, access points are the little boxes that you see up on the ceiling. That's what gives you your Wi-Fi as you sit at the table. All of those boxes terminate into various closets around the school where they actually plug into. So those switches direct traffic around the district. Another cost-saving, cost-savings method we were able to tap into is the state of Illinois now covers our internet bill. So a cost savings of about $60,000 to $64,000 a year, that is now paid by the state of Illinois. With that, we were also able to tap into a quite significant speed increase. You know, most of you, when you have your at-home internet, you get the one gig speed, and you're like, oh, man, this is blazing fast. We have 10 gigs worth of speed here in the district. I think we are the only district in the area that has internet that fast. So that is a really big benefit for our district here. So what else are we doing? Cybersecurity is probably one of the most important goals that we're always looking to improve and work on, because we do know that in this day and age, schools are soft targets for cyber attacks, right? Hackers know that schools often don't have the same protections as something like a bank or a major corporation. So they now target schools as a result. We take cybersecurity of the, with the utmost importance here. So what did we work on this year as far as cybersecurity? So as we conducted our penetration test, which is, again, we hire an outside service to see what kind of vulnerabilities they can find in our network, and then they give us suggestions about what we can improve. The suggestion that we worked on this year is something called network segmentation. So when you walked into the building today, you connected to CUSD 200 guests, right? That ensured that any outside device that wasn't our device and wasn't managed by us is on a separate network that can't talk or compromise any of our core systems. So we have different Wi-Fi networks in the district so that someone can't use one of those systems to gain access to an important core system and do potential harm. Another part of security is actual physical security in the building. And in conjunction with Dr. O'Keefe and Dr. Kyle here, we've been working hard at really honing in and making sure it works with Fidelity, a system called Informacast. So what Informacast is, if there's ever an emergency, active shooter inside of a building, any phone that's in this district, a staff member can dial 1400, and that call will go to all of the speakers within the building, so that we can get that emergency message to everybody else in the building. So it uses all of the speakers in conjunction with the speaker on the phone, so that everyone can hear the emergency message. And as a part of that Informacast notification, everybody on SLT and administration gets a real-time alert when somebody dials 1400. So the minute somebody dials 1400, I get a message on my phone. It actually takes over my phone in my office, and I can hear in real time. So as an administration team, we can mobilize if someone were to dial 1400. So that's a big safety feature we've implemented this year. Other security checks that we've done. Two-factor authentication is required for all critical district systems. So all staff members use it for their Google accounts, Synergy, iVisions, anything that's critical to the district has two-factor authentication. As you remember, last year, we implemented our 16-character passphrase. I, I think staff have, have come to, grown accustomed to that. And the reason why it's so long, and the reason why we use passphrase is now, is because as, also as part of that penetration test, we learned that, one, random characters, people often forget random characters. So that's why we said passphrase, so it's easier to remember. But the longer a password is, it literally adds months of time for a brute force attack. And so something like a 16-character passphrase would literally take years for brute force attack to find out what your password was. So it's, they're, they're pretty strong passwords now. As I remember, as part of our cybersecurity insurance coverage, we have to participate and do annual phishing campaigns for district staff education. Right before winter break, we did such a campaign. Our phishing rate, I believe, was around 10 to 11% people who clicked. But I will say, that's pretty good, given how difficult we made that particular phishing scheme. So we use that opportunity to then work with staff and remind them constantly that phishing is a, is also at an all-time high. And we're really focusing on this year with our phishing, is that we're also seeing that phishing campaigns are getting more advanced, and they tend to happen around high emotional periods. So you'll see phishing uptick right now, as tax season starts, right? You're going to, you're going to, you see different phishing scams asking for tax forms, or saying that your tax refund is being held, is like that. So we're trying to, we're trying to educate staff that when these times come up during the year, be watch out for increased phishing attempts. Following to our second goal in Vision 2026 is to ensure comprehensive data systems are accessible and usable for staff. So the work that we did in this area here is that we really wanted to focus on innovation and reliability in our student information system. So the board, today as part of your consent agenda, did approve migrating all of the data that we host locally here to now be hosted in the cloud directly with EduPoint. And we hope that that move will help improve the usability of Synergy for parents. And we also hope that anytime that we have to ask EduPoint for direct support, they can help us quicker, because they have direct access to our data now, right? Now, if something major were to happen as part of Synergy, since it's hosted locally, they have to remote into our system, get in contact with us, and then there's a lot of back and forth. So we hope that that move to the cloud will improve the usability and stability of Synergy. Last board meeting, the board also approved the exact same thing for our HR and business system, which is iVisions. So again, we hope that it improves the stability, usability for our staff members in our, as far as HR and business and running payroll, and then also thinking about how we can improve our workflows for onboarding new staff in HR. I will just throw a little bullet point. One of the also major reasons specifically that applies to iVisions is that Tyler Technology told us specifically that there will be, there will come a point where any new feature they come out with will only be for people who are hosted in the cloud. So they are almost forcing clients to go to the cloud to do that. So we do want to innovate, and we do want to take advantage of all those new features. So it did make sense to move to the cloud, in addition to all of the practical things I mentioned about helping business and HR with their stability and workflows. In order to help with this work, and really dive into the work that sits before helping HR and business with their workflow, and then being able to take all of these new features and implement them with fidelity, and make sure that we're optimizing innovation in those two departments, we have hired a new position, Sam Reynolds. He was actually part of the Department of Innovation and Technology. He has now moved to the business and HR sections of our district to oversee iVisions and work with business and HR to help with those workflows. with business and HR to help with those workflows and migration aspects. And lastly, how we're regularly evaluating digital tools and subscriptions here in the district. We want to make sure that what we spend our money on are the right things, and we also want to make sure that what we're buying also keeps the data of our students safe. So remind the board that we do have a law in Illinois called SOPA, meaning that any digital tool that collects personally identifiable information on students is subject to specific requirements and agreements that we have to sign on with the vendor. And the vendor has to agree to those privacy requirements as part of the SOPA compliance. To track all that, we have a system called Learn Platform. Teachers go to Learn Platform first to see what we already approve as SOPA compliant as well as to request any new tool they might want to use. Learn Platform also has a public site that parents can see to see which tools are allowed here in the district and what we use with students as well. Phase two, which we're in right now, is that while a tool may be SOPA compliant, we still need to ensure that it can be fully supported with district resources. We have to be good stewards of the budget that we're faced with. We would like to give teachers everything that they want, but we really have to make sure that we get the most bang for our buck because just as construction costs keep going up, the cost of digital tools keep skyrocketing as well. So we really want to make sure that we're good stewards in that regard. That was it. I think we did accomplish a lot of work this year as far as our infrastructure update and cybersecurity updates, but I will gladly take any questions if the board has any.
Questions or comments for Dr. Spencer? No, Dr., sorry, Dr., I made it, I gave you another title there. For Mr. Spencer.
I have one. Well, first, thank you very much. Thank you for all this. Just a quick question on the last slide, the Learn Platform, where can parents access that from?
There is a link on the district website.
It's just through the, was it through each individual school or the main?
So it's on the district page and it's under my department, and on the left, it is, it says SOPA compliance, and then there's a link that gives you a list of all the tools that we use in the district.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, really nice job. A couple of things. One is the trends we're seeing in, that you laid out, are very much the trends we see in commercial business, in the marketplace, right? The cloud, the increased security, privacy, access, keeping up to date with equipment so you're not taking huge spikes. The one thing I'd like to call out, and one, congratulations on the phishing thing. And I mentioned it last time we talked about this, but I'll just mention it again, I'd like to see more phishing campaigns, frankly. I don't think once a year is enough.
Yeah, we're hopefully quarterly, I think.
I know there's pain points to that, I get it. So you'll work through it, but give you an example, my last opportunity, we did it monthly and reported to the board on it quarterly. So it's an important number. You're 14%, I think you said, that's a good number. That's a really good number. A lot of companies experience the 20%, 25%. So that's a really nice job by everybody. And you're right about it, coming during kind of high sensitive times, and that sometimes can frustrate people, but that's when you're attacked. So I really commend the timing you picked, and I think it's exactly right on target and it's going to continue and get worse. So I would encourage more if we can. Not knowing the unintended consequences of my statement, I'll just continue to encourage that, and I think it's very much on-market trend to do more. So thanks, appreciate it, great job.
Thanks.
Other questions for Mr. Spencer?
I know, I'm curious if this is standard, if this is something we have, but does our cyber liability insurance have that, like a consultancy service where if we have a question on if we have breached or not, there's an attorney or advisor available?
Yeah, as part of our Click Insurance, we are assigned someone from the insurance collective that would work with us if we were ever to be breached.
Good, you just tickled something in my head. Last time I looked at it as well, and I don't know how our structure works in terms of our insurance on that, but we were required to reach out to them almost immediately and engage with them immediately versus trying to figure it out ourselves, right? And I don't know if that's the case, but I would encourage that exploration as well.
And that's exactly what they, because if we were to actually get hacked by somebody, they would also then be the go-between, the FBI would probably be involved as well.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you.
Yeah, nice job.
Moving on, written reports attached to the agendas, the monthly financial reports, the FOIA report, the board communication log, Citizens Advisory Committee report, board committee reports attached to the board finance committee met on January 18th, other reports from board members. Topics for future discussion, we have the fiscal year 2022 audit. Does anybody else have anything they would like to have added? I do. I believe this month, all board members will have now had an opportunity to visit CAC. I believe it was when we were going through bylaws last time, I had asked that once everybody's had an opportunity, we could come back and revisit those bylaws if we need to. So just something possibly for future discussion, once we've all had an opportunity this month, now I think everyone will have. Next regular meeting is March 8th at Wheaton North. February 22nd is Committee of the Whole at the School Service Center. February 25th, Chat with the Board at the School Service Center. I move for us to adjourn to closed session pursuant to Illinois Opens Meeting Act exemption 5 ILCS 120/2, subparagraph C, subparagraph 9. I need a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Paulson. Ms. Hudson, so will you call the roll?
Mr. Hamlin.
I'm sorry.
One of us takes offense.
Boy, I am like...
I'm not sure which one, but...
Mr. Hamlin. Mrs. Hudson, so will you first call the roll?
Ms. Bradbury?
Yes.
Mr. Hamlin?
Yes.
Ms. Lightner?
Yes.
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 There is action expected after the closed session.